Yeah, my ability won't work.
All right, I've got six thirty with Paul's. And if you would, then have the indication. Gracious heaven, Paul, we come to call you this evening praising and agitating your name, thanking you for all the people done on creation, everyone in this world and this town. Father, we ask that God in hand be upon our shoulders and impart on us the wisdom and the knowledge to know what is to do, the best of all sins of this town and this area. Be with us in all we do, and return that praise back to you, for in your name we pray, amen. Now, if you would, well, we will lead you to the way of the United States of America and to the Republic, which contains one nation under God, indivisible, to the liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, they approve the amendment, if you would, you recite.
Yes, sir, I will, to advance a framework for our success through balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged candidate.
And if Mr. Brown, if you would, if you recite on South City Vision.
Solid City of the Safe, Prosperous and Vibrant Community, where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Uh, adjustments to the agenda.
Uh, there's a public session.
How do you do?
I like to hold a session. Now, um.
Oh, you want to add, we got a closed session. Yeah. We don't have that. That would be your first discussion about any process tonight. Um, that's right. Is it appropriate, Commissioner Austin, approaching you and what his concern is, or that's been open, or the point, I don't know.
I don't know what it is, and I don't want to frustrate the closed session by talking about how we'll take a break at some point, I can see.
Okay, we can add that in, and that's lovely, all right, Commissioner Austin?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. We do have adjustments where, uh, you know, we have amended agenda at your tables, adding items to your head, uh, items, uh, what's for, uh, Eric Matthews' report for education, for example, about him, society, water tank project, administration, completely what says, comes by water tank project design and engineering. Uh, also as presentation for Mr. Matthews's four point two, uh, and for our average five point three, uh, for a tangible period calling, extending mayor term on two years, four years. Uh, there's also a closed session of our sense of action A five.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We're gonna, we're gonna put the agenda.
I saw it's amended. Motion to approve the agenda is amended.
Second, no motion, and second, discussion, and question. Three and none, all those in favor say aye, aye, all those opposed, like signs. The agenda, the minute.
I make emotionally approved consent agenda.
So. We have a motion, and we said, many discussion, question, consent. Any none, all those in favor say aye, aye, all opposed, like signs, that motion here. All right. Presentation. All right. May you be the third.
Mayor Board, I know we've had several work sessions to discuss our budget. Within time, we've gathered data to discuss the point two, point four budget, but in compliance with the general statute, this form of my business, town manager's budget presentation highlighting what we're going to see in our upcoming budget of July. So here are highlights of all of our four major funds, you know. You know, we have four funds in our, in our town budget, our general fund, which is ten, our power bill fund, which is twenty, water and sewer fund, which is thirty, and our license plate agency of forty. But what you see before you is total figures for fiscal year twenty twenty three, which is the year that we're currently in, and effective July one through June thirty, but twenty four, that's FY twenty four. You see our increase, um, eighteen point four to around twenty point six million dollars, uh, for next year, so roughly two point two, uh, six million dollars, or twelve percent increase in the total budget across the entire town of Silver City. So, in order to this budget process, we did something a little different. We didn't have our typical retreat all day, and we tried to adopt and follow, but it keeps you planning. So we've worked together as an organization to try and tie the efforts of our community plan into our budget process. That's something that we started this year, it's something that's going to be an ongoing process, it's our, uh, budget manager, and going through that role and making sure that we're integrating our priorities and our goals of the organization, the power aligning, our resources as a budget. So for the public here, uh, I want to highlight what we're talking about, so the strategic priority one, facilitate responsible growth and community development, and we lay out the goal and reference to that. Our second priority was to plan and implement sustainable infrastructure, and that's a lot of thought, and why we're seeing an increase in our budget this year is to make sure we're aggressive, and planning to implement that sustainable infrastructure. Uh, far and three, we're trying to achieve organizational and operational excellence, we want to make sure that we're able to retain, retain, track and develop quality employees, providing competitive salaries, that's something we're also trying to address in this budget. We're trying to enhance community engagement. Uh, as you know, we kicked off our process of having our committee board, and all of our districts, every other month, a meeting, we've had two of those apart, and we're going to have our third one, Commissioner Brown's getting it going during first. We're trying to make sure they're going through our budget process, we're giving their property level of inclusion across the entire community. At priority five, we're trying to divide and follow the public safety, that's one of the critical sort of objectives, and I'm making sure that we're keeping the public safe, and building police department over the future. So a few highlights, we're trying to summarize where we're going for next year, really some bullet points, major objectives for next year. The path for Dallas budget, that's a statutory requirement in North Carolina, we can't run that. Uh, we don't have the luxury of being the federal government that we can do that, we have to make sure that we bring in the same amount of revenue as what we plan to spend, so our budget balance, there is no property tax increase. Uh, we will maintain a certain, the same tax rate, uh, for next fiscal year. We've also worked intimately out on the group plan, that's something we have not had, we've paid, we've had a deal plan, but it's never been fully realized, we're going through the process of the long-term vision, and making sure we have what we need in the future. We're working to upgrade our water and wastewater facilities, so I'm going to find you all a note of the development that we're going to see in the town, that we upgraded water facilities, and our wastewater treatment plant, as we go through the process of upgrading our wastewater treatment plant from four million gallons per day, to six million gallons per day and gone. We're working to resolve our recording issue. That will not happen overnight, but we've worked as an agency to get into a special order of consent, along with our friends at DEQ, to make sure that we have a game plan and attacking the whole face process, what we need to do to get out of that more important, so that we can have additional residential business growth, um, affecting our sewer operations. We did budget an increase to water and sewer rates created capital projects, that you'll see about one point seven million dollars additional revenue from necessary rate increases. Um, as we discussed in our last work session, you're looking at about twenty five point four four percent was what inflation has been along since July twenty sixteen, the last time we adjusted, so it's been seven years of increasing water and sewer rate increase. Uh, we're going to keep up with the capital projects that needs we have on board, now the time we're going to need to take some, I have. Uh, we've also invested in public safety, making sure that we meet the needs of the future there, uh, there's a seven percent increase for cost of living for our town employees. We're working to improve town recruits by making sure that funding for our town recruits and power bills is more committed to the service and recruits rather than other allocations for personnel. We've improved employee benefits and regarding the insurance, uh, being able to minimize the increase to a nominal amount while improving the quality of services that our employees are receiving. We're continuing to invest in parks and recreation, so here's, uh, from our, our friends, with the revenue, our master plan presentation. So general fund revenues, so these are the revenues, uh, in reference to the property tax, general fund is a reminder for us here from most of our town departments, all the services that was devised as an organization excluding our painting of streets, the power bill, water, sewer, and license plate. Fire Department, Police Department, Parks and Rec, um, Town Hall Administration, from finance to planning, all are essentially paid for through the general fund, and property tax is a substantial part of that revenue source, kind of around half of our entire general fund revenue. And you'll see a slight dip from current year to next year, and why is that? There's a difference in the budget because of people appealing the process of their property tax. So we haven't seen growth because of the more of here, but we have seen the reduction due to those appeals, so we see a slight reduction about one percent from where we currently stand. Uh, you also see some shifting in where some of the things are allocated, those aren't due to new revenues, we're trying to make sure we're doing a better job of tracking the revenues from the past, so we have a more accurate accounting. So we're creating more line limits to make sure there's more transparency and clarity and helpful attitude in the process. Sales tax, so sales tax is also another substantial part of our revenue through solid here, but every dollar that's spent in Chad County, Silver City is a percentage of that, whether it's spending in Olston, or Pittford, or Silver City, or somewhere in the county, percentage of that revenue going back to Silver City. Chad County, the last two months, the same largest increase in sales tax in county, in state, in Carolina, that's good for Silver City, because it gives us more revenue to operate key services. But sales tax is not one article, um, that, by the state, they define several different articles, and we have broken that out, so you'll see previously, sales tax was essentially lumped together under one article. Now we've broken that out into all the different sales tax articles to offer show a more accurate reflection of the types of revenues we're receiving. We get information throughout the year that there might be an increase in sales in certain areas, but not others, video programming, for example, the taxes you pay on your cable bill, and something, and finally, during the years, people go to streaming services. Having our accurate breakdown gives us more accurate information, so we can make, um, ready-made decisions as we go through the year. The other general fund revenues, uh, these are all the general fund revenues we have in our budget that are not related to property taxes and sales taxes. So I know that bond is small, so I'm just going to hit, quickly hit the highlights, because what you'll see, the biggest increase from that is stormwater fee, that's an additional revenue, so it's four hundred sixty three thousand three hundred eighty dollars. So going through our work session process, we decided it was important to prioritize lead, lead collection, and also stormwater products that we have throughout the town that have been collected for the last few years, we don't have the revenue in our streets division to appropriately cover these needs, and this will allow us to do that as we go forward. And there's also a budget, a three percent increase from GFL, who was our contractor that divides our, our curbside waste to go, so those are my few of this key highlight. General fund expenditure. So we did some shifting around this year with the budget when it comes to general fund expenditures, so one of the biggest changes that you're going to see is a substantial increase in buildings and grounds. One of the things that we thought was important was to centralize all of our buildings and grounds functions into one department. Um, we have maintenance that goes on for all of our facilities, but each department has a different approach, different contractors that are utilized, we felt it was important to centralize that service for better economies of scale, that's why you see such a significant increase there. As you know, back in the fall, we did a split of our community development and planning department and teaching separate departments, so you see planning listed as a separate department, so maintaining community development, that would create this department, uh, planning is a new department, either our budget going forward. Uh, you'll also note the library has been moved to five hundred, five hundred is buildings and grounds, the library is not a service that we offer, we simply own the building where the library exists, we felt it more appropriate going forward, that those funds be budgeted in that manner. Uh, similarly, in non-apartmental, we've got funds that cross several departments, so we moved to non-apartmental, we're going to rebuild that was more appropriate place to list them. And give commissioners credit, we have seen a reduction due to paying off the existing debt in our debt service, so our debt service has been reduced by forty seven percent, which is outstanding. Uh, overall, total general fund, you see an increase of around a billion dollars, or twelve percent. For our power bill, so for those who don't know, power bill is funding that we receive from the state of North Carolina for the painting of streets, uh, state of North Carolina requires this been, um, a big charge for this one, we're, of course, primarily, as the fund was spent on resurfacing the streets, and other items related to that. So when it comes to power bill, we wanted to prioritize, uh, the resurfacing of the streets, so you'll see a significant reduction in personnel-related costs in the first few line items, salaries, longevity, overtime, et cetera, and zeroed out. And we've increased the amount of, uh, money you're seeing for painting and resurfacing, so that we're able to more effectively resurface our streets, or essentially have more money available, so that we can meet that service need. Um, you do see a slight reduction, but it comes to the expenditures, and why is that, around eight thousand dollars, that's because unfortunately, when we entered this last census, it reported a decrease in population for Silver City. So while we can certainly contest that, I feel like we've been to increase the population since the last census, how it was based on a former, half of it's based on the population of Silver City, and the other half is based on miles of surface street, so it went into a slight reduction of around eight thousand. So water and sewer, so this is where you're going to see an increase, it's around one point seven million dollars when you look at water charges, the total sewer charges. But you have in front of you a cheap label coffee points for water and sewer increases, but we did our best to try and inside, how the impact, impact on not only residents inside and outside of Silver City, but also our converting businesses and our whole industrial unit. So a few highlights of what that means, and just in context there, town Silver City currently has twenty five water and sewer capital projects completed over the next seven years. Capital projects are projects that are so significant that we can expect to complete them during a single fiscal year, that they roll beyond July one to July third. So that's where we are today, we know that the growth that we're coming, we will have substantially more water and sewer problems than that, and we'll be adding more product before we can even close all the projects that we've had, that's the, the consequence of significant growth. These water and sewer capital projects total profit is one hundred thirteen million dollars, and as you know, from our report from freezing equals to do the water and sewer segment, we're looking at four hundred million dollars needed water and sewer infrastructure improvements in just the next twenty to thirty years. The town has received forty one billion dollars in grants for these water and sewer capital projects, however, we still have a shortfall, shortfall of seventy two million dollars. The town, just for context, in our operating budget, our current budget that we're having for, that we're proposing for point four, we've seen an increase in chemical costs of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars just for those plants, look for our water paper plant, and our wastewater treatment plant, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars just in chemical cost, these are costs that we can't defer, these are things that we have to have to operate our plant annual. Along those same lines, slug removal, which is the critical piece of running the operation of the wastewater plant, there's a quarter million dollar increase when we do this year, so if those two revenue alone, you're looking at over a half a million dollars, six hundred thousand dollars, and this increase operational cost in just two items. We were projecting that the water sewer rate increase would generate a lot of, for our one point seven million, so in, just in context, on the type of level of development that we're seeing in Silver City, we have profits out there like coal speed, a four point eight billion dollar investment. We're looking at four hundred million needed for infrastructure, um, one point seven million dollars is all we're bringing from the revenue increase, um, we've seen the inflation numbers point five point four four, as you know. What we're proposing does not even need that inflation number July one sixteen, it's around one percent. The water and sewer fund expenditures, uh, we added building new ground, be consistent with the general fund, so you'll see that was zeroed out for the current year, around nine hundred thousand dollars, you'll see for the current year, same concept, we have a lot of building made that the needs to go on, we felt that needed to be separated out from regular operations, so it can be run through our home works area. And then also increases in the non-apartmental, uh, the decreases you'll see are not cuts in services, you'll see a decrease in the wastewater treatment plant, that has seemed to offset through that increase in buildings and grounds. Uh, debt service is notable, you see an increase there, that is from our metering project, so throughout the next year, we will be going to AMI, which is an automated metering service, so that really have more responsive metering, more accurate reading of their water and sewer system, so that they can read their meter at real time, and have the access to that information, so that it's getting through their monthly water bill, they would have the potential to know at any point, um, uh, what their reading is, and even, even more accurate level. So that is fine, for the next five years, and this is showing the first of the five annual payments. And then finally, our licensed plate agency program, so this is a very unique service that we all install, so there are various communities that have a licensed plate agency, that's actually part of public town governance, so this is the, the unique service that we're proud to offer. Um, not a, not a lot of change that you'll see, but we did have to transfer from the general fund around thirty three thousand dollars, we do not have control over the revenue, the state defines what we're allowed to charge and running that operation. Then we hire the employees, but revenue is controlled by the state, so as a consequence of that, it is something that we have to pull money, uh, from the general fund, or essentially from, uh, from fund balance, because it does not break through, this doesn't fund it, does which money, but it is an important service that we offer, that we will continue to fund. So what's, what's left, this is our fifth discussion of the budget, only the, the budget presentation with manager, uh, on June the fifth, which is our first regular meeting in the month of June, we will have to talk here, uh, required often. The, uh, budget will be advertised, so anyone who has interest and want to review the consensus of the budget can contact, uh, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson, the budget manager, and that can be provided to them, and then on June the twentieth, a reminder, it's Tuesday, we'll be closed for Juneteenth, and in accordance with that on that Monday, uh, the budget will be brought to you with the budget ordinance for all of that.
So you can try. Yeah. You know, I don't know. Well, good, well, just like, all of us, none of you are the service, we have a, a part of nature, here, to be a resolution, here, so bear with me, I'll go to it. Town Silver City Resilient, recognizing twenty two years and two months of service of Mr. Eric S. Matthews, the Town Silver City Public Works Department. Whereas Eric S. Matthews was hired as a public works leader from the Silver City Street Maintenance Department on March nineteenth, two thousand and one, and whereas Eric S. Matthews came through Luther for the Silver City Street Maintenance Department on January the eighth, two thousand and seven. And whereas Eric S. Matthews became equipment operator, greater work for the Silver City Street Maintenance Department on March thirteenth, two thousand and three. Whereas a dedicated interest devoted to duty have a valuable effect on the efficiency of the street maintenance department, whereas he has reached the age of retirement and desire to devote his efforts and energies in other areas. Now, therefore, it is resolved to the Silver City Board of Commissioners and all citizens to hereby express appreciation to Eric S. Matthews for a job well done, and wishing well in his future endeavors, this fifteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-three. Something else we probably had seen bad, like, maybe, all right. This time we'll move on to the public here. This time we'll move on to the public hearing.
But there are just. Standing there with, you know, it's hard to recognize someone. Uh, we have. Uh, a new report here from our highest formers, starting today. Uh, Ellen, you say. So Ellen, Ellen started with us today as our highest panelists. We finally have a whole team of panelists. We're very happy to have them knowing our team.
You'll say if you were. All right. And now we'll move on to our public hearing. First up, five point four, five point one, R twenty three dash oh four oh two. Additional zoning Everest Park, Everest Park LLC. Now open the public hearing.
Good evening. Uh, this is K R twenty three dash zero four oh two by Everest Park. The owners are Everest Park LLC. The applicant is the Bob Kinsey of the community of the hearing. There is a potential for additional rezoning of two lots from agricultural residential. To a planned unit development, which will consist of the zoning districts of B one, residential six, and residential ten. The acreage for the property is approximately two hundred and ninety three point two two acres. Um, during the April meeting, the planning board did make recommendations denied their request in a vote of five to two. The planning board has recommended denial in a vote of five to two. The subject properties are located south of South Chatham Avenue extension. To the east of Block and Road and to the west of Bell Bell Lane is slightly old US four twenty one site. According to the zoning map, this area is on the agricultural residential and is located in the town. Um, entry territorial jurisdiction. The land use map recommends that this area be developed as rural residential. Uh, rural residential is defined as areas with varying load density. That are either environmentally sensitive or are located beyond the anticipated service area of the town. The subject properties are currently undeveloped and unfortunately cleared. That is proposing to do a planned unit development, uh, which will consist of three zoning districts. B one, R six, and R ten zone. As you can see from the site plan submitted by the applicant, that again is proposing to have a buffer of fifty feet around the perimeter. This is an increase from the ten foot required um, by the current unified development ordinance. That again is proposing to um, have the development with four hundred and twenty nine single family lots. Two hundred and nine hundred town home lots and two hundred and sixteen apartment rooms. There will also be a section of the development um, to the south in the middle that will be for senior living. The applicants are proposing to phase this development in in your package as well as on the screen. You can see. The phasing, uh, the proposed phasing for the developer. The actions tonight are to approve or to approve the rezoning. For an EUD to be um, B one, R six, R ten, as proposed by applicant's man. Um, and amend the Silver City Land Development Plan to accommodate mixed use. Or deny requests um, as not consistent with the area um, in the Silver City names we settled in place. That says presentation. I do believe we have several people at the audience tonight. Um, as well as the applicant that signed up this.
I mean, applicant will go and do his presentation directly after Jennifer. He's not part of the public. I mean. He doesn't have to sign up to speak. He doesn't have to bring him up. Yes, and that.
Staff have a recommendation, I'd be honest with you to see.
That did not need a recommendation, but the planning board did make a recommendation to the next.
All right. Uh, what we'll have. Where's that? There you are. Yeah, good, good.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. My name is Bob Betsch, and as mentioned, I'm Jennifer. Uh, I represent the applicant. I'm just here basically to to introduce the line. First, I have Jim Adkins, who's on speaking, the civil design layout for the project itself. Brad Andrew and his daughter Angela, Brad and the owner of the property and the golfer. And then Will Worth is a son of it and Mary, who we talked basics, civil engineering aspects of that specifically. And then finish up with that along who is working as a graphic editor of our many projects and will oversee both the design and the chart.
Very good. Um, I am the design of the project so far. Okay, one one is continued, his name and address, like your wife. Um. You can see here in the dispositions map that the site has been partly timbered for maintenance. Uh, there is, uh, the client did, uh, tend for the property to get rid of the dead trees and these trees and open the side up a little bit. Um, with the understanding that fifty foot to a hundred foot around the perimeter was to be maintained for additional buffering. And then with respect to streams and weather as well, uh, where they're untouched, uh, for their environmental purposes. And you've seen this briefly a moment ago from Jennifer. And I will walk through this. We are here basically for a rezoning request. We do understand that we have to present a conceptual site plan. So this is conceptual nature. Um, it is by no means uh, finished product. Uh, but we are going with from an A, we're looking to go from the AR to the hood with uh, B one, R six, and R ten. And the beginning of the process, we are looking at the orange. You'll see there is light commercial. Um, with restaurants, um, with your natural laws, barber shops, things like that. Um, convenience stores, um, apartments above. And then as you move into the site further, you're going to the purple area, which represents the town hall communities. So then from there, you will go to the middle section where you'll see our senior citizens center, which will house approximately three hundred beds. Um, and then there also will be an amenity site there with a potential pond. That we will transform back into at the end of the project into an amenity in itself. And then beside of that, senior citizens center, we will also have um, two um, community centers as well. That can, it can be functioned for the senior citizens living as well as for the rest of the development and surrounding communities. So it's not going to be just a complete complete this development. It is going to be open to the general public around it as well. And as you move through the site, you'll go into the back toward the property, which is the final facing of this, and that will be your single family lots. Uh, with the, you know, the the typical zoning requirements, and then there's going to be a half acre lots, which are shaped shaped in the area. Now, this development is geared towards a multi-generational development, meaning that. If you come here, you can grow up here, you have children that could grow up, live in the community that are prospering or prospered in the community. And then they also will retire in the community itself and senior citizens there. And we've also noticed that the red dash line supports back of the property represent approximately twenty one thousand linear foot of uh, trail systems. Which will link back to the sidewalks for the town halls, so will link back to the commercial. And all of this will be acceptable for all of the surrounding communities, not just the development. The goal of this development here is to is to. Is to enhance the community, but also to bring the community into this area as well with the parks. We're giving back actually. We provide food. I believe we're required to have, um, I want to say like, uh, six point seven, six acres of mini parks in Europe. But we're actually giving back so far a little over eleven acres. And that was represented in the tan areas towards backup property and centralized in the center of the land. We will be treating all onsite runoff water onsite. It will be treated onsite by these pond systems. It will not reach into the streams. The streams will be protected. There will be no effects downstream at all. We are bound by codes and laws to protect the streams at all costs. And that would be the pond representation here. And most potential ponds in most of our lots, they are their only side or not amenities, but their side um. Devices, if you will, that are required. So they're usually tucked to the back of the properties and surrounded by metal cans. And they go like that, basically. They just serve a purpose, a tool, if you will, to flex for a while. But we are actually as a company looking at bringing those devices out of the darkness next to the light and turning them back into a negative sites. Whether they've got overlooks attached to them, whether they've got gazebos for for outdoor wedding lectures. Or what have you. Um, and just a place to enjoy with the family. And the larger parks in the center will be. The largest of the two of the four parks, excuse me. And they will house things like pop-up farmers markets. The they have dog parks, could be a petting zoo, you know, things like that. Um, just a place for you to come out with your families, your children, your pets, and then enjoy nature. And then we're also looking at the trail cities being like an educational part to the parks. So there'll be some children that can come here and learn about the different ecosystems for the development. Around the streams, the ponds, and so forth. And we are protecting, like Jennifer said, we're we're bound by U D O to protect at least a minimum of ten foot around the property. We actually had a uh, community meeting on Thursday, presumably to talk to some of the residents. And we are uh, we are listening to what the residents have to say. If they won't, you know, we're opening up to for to, they won't to see things, elements of the parks. Additional buffers, we are listening to that. And we're here to answer any questions that anybody has tonight regarding any element of this development or any concern that anyone has. But we are actually giving back to the site, even though it's been timbered for management. Once the development is done, and we're looking at a ten plus year process here, we're not looking at overnight. But once this development is processed and completely developed. Whatever may have stepped over, we are going back and reforesting the areas that need to be buffed up or additional bars. Because our our client is very environmental sensitive person, and he actually is looking to move into this community. But this development will also bring a lot of jobs to Silver City, uh, especially within this cluster community. And allow the sites to give back to the community as well, and that is our goal. We don't develop sites and and expect them just to be confined to that area of living. We actually open it up to the general public, the population. The park will be open, the trail will be open, of course, all the commercials I can go over. This is what we do here for the best and the best way of moving throughout the site. Does anyone have any question for me before I have some?
Um, do you want more pump station? Are you just going to have one? Or are you going to have several? Is there actually phase in these different levels?
That's a question I'm going to defer to. Will Hill will speak uh, towards Dan on the civil aspect of the project.
All right.
But then I do know that this project will only develop as the infrastructure is improved. It's not going to be. Boom, we're coming in doing the whole inch lot at the same time. It's going to be phased as the infrastructure is built up to accommodate this. We know that, you know, apparently the infrastructure doesn't have a capacity.
Right.
But as work happens, then the development itself will will all with that.
Okay.
But you'll be able to speak more second class.
So and so uh, there's initially one entrance and and exit out of the property, and then do I understand that you're going to have one directly for twenty one?
Yes, sir. We are currently, we have secured the one entrance there with, that's why the facing that.
Which one did you secure or?
The one off Blossom is the one that we're looking at a primary right now. And the the crossing for the railroad is still in negotiations. Our client is talking to some of the railroad about that crossing. And we also understand that unless we have two entrances, we're in this spacing plan, there we only have seventy, seventy seven uh, town halls. That will be built because you have to have no more than a hundred, which is one of these. So in order to to completely finish the development, we will have to secure second exits.
Okay.
Where is, and this goes to what you said, that entrance that you're going to have right there on Blossom Road. Blossom Road, not that big road, and it's going to come out right there in a curve, I think, in that crossing, right? Right. Are there any plans to upgrade that section of Blossom Road? Because I go through there a lot, and you know, it's it's just. Harm seat mode.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we we do have plans to improve that as well, you know, that wouldn't stop like a wolf. But this over here had um, there had been a president of TIA, those project, and he can speak to you on about that.
Okay, and then that same thing is your streets wide enough to accommodate. Make it make it sound standard.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, everything that you see on this map has been taken from U D O.
Okay.
For all circumstances.
And since Commissioner Brown asked that, and maybe think some, that once, you know, it's going to be a base. But once, you know, you get the road and deal and everything, it will build to sound standard. Uh, who are you going to try to turn them over to down before you can keep the maintenance up on, snow removed, that kind of thing.
We currently have them listed as public by ways. So there will be, yes, state maintained, though, at least that's the way we, well, I'm sorry, some of the, some of these town halls is state maintained. I can never speak to that as well, but we've heard that that will miss the visit, gets public roads, at least it's fine, but not the uh, not the off roads. The roads going into the town.
So. The main room, the.
Yes. And as far as the the open space requirements for Silver City, we were, well, we're bound by, uh, I believe it was five percent of the total lot. Or that we're giving, we're going at its standards today, even with the timbering that's happened, we're still going in excess of sixty thousand acres. Of natural green space, and it doesn't include the buffer. And then the the lighter green will. The lighter green, it's going to hard signal the distance, is just general open space, open green space. That we're giving in addition to that. And like I was saying, for once, once the plan has went through the process of rezoning. And we start getting into construction drawings and looking to find grading. We may find out that some of these lots won't work. But right now, we're currently just showing, this is the representation of what is allowed by the current U D O for each one of the zones. And then once we get into by grading, we may see that some of these lots don't work, and then that that area will be given back as separate space and reinforced.
Other questions?
Man. Especially. Councilman, councilwoman, and then ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brad Hendrick. I lead the group of the developers for this product. Um. The technical, technical details, we have technical team here, like Jim said, we did the. North Carolina Department of uh, Calculation, uh, T I A study, that we actually did that. Uh, does the study just show what needs to be done, what kind of improvement needs to be done at a certain level of the improvement? That uh, I can speak to on that gap. And then, but I just wanna. Give a little bit of a rendition about, I'm ready to, I just want to talk about the, what we're trying to do. This might look like a whole, some mega project, massive project, that is in the city of New York. And this might look like all the round homes, yes, of course, there's a lot of homes. But behind what you see here is is we are trying to create a community that. Was in harmony with the nature, in harmony with the people that are living through me. Uh my vision is to create a community that I can be proud of, that that, you know, I I led a project to to develop. Uh which is safe for everyone to be member. Where I can live alongside my neighbors. If I'm not, I did something so coming, then people that are that are living here aren't, and they have you. So I'm taking that risk. It's not even a risk, it's it's a challenge that I'm I'm willing to take, I'll be living in the community and. Uh so that's that's how confident I am, that this is not only we're not thinking, looking at making money, quickly do something and run away. This is gonna be a long-term project, you will see me as a resident here, as as you as your neighbor here for a long time, long time to come. Uh a little background about myself, uh I was born and grew up in the remote mountains in Nepal. I came here about thirty years ago to go to college. Uh after after the college, I joined IBM at the system interior. I worked for about five years, and then I started doing business. Uh I've done a lot of regions, restaurants, gas stations, uh stop divisions, apartments. Um but I wanted to create a a project that. That that I could be uh that that I could be a stimulus about, and this is what, you know, we 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 wanna make it here. Um. So I've been, you know, traveling all over the places and I look at the other communities and what they have done. Uh and it's very hard to see a community where you are able to find. The things that you look for in the community, like Jimmy talked about, the walking trails, right? When when you get out of your home, you can actually access the walking trail, you can walk all morning long. Uh the parks, I know there are parks in the community, uh but they're not abundant, they're not walking, right? It's got a drive to go to go over there. Uh the retail, the commercial retail, we're not talking about big box stores, we're not talking home people, we're not talking loans, we're talking about small grocery store. Your restaurants, hair salon, something that you would go, you would be able to walk from your home. And go get a haircut, come home and take a shower. Those kind of businesses we're talking about, so the mixed development that we're talking about, we're gonna have the mom of retail stores on the first floor. Then you have your insurance offices, insurance editor topics for a real estate editor on the second floor, and then apartment on the third floor. That's the kind of retail department, which is very likely, and you can walk morning, evening, uh uh any any time of the day. And then you don't need to buy, that's not, you don't necessarily need to buy. But does that mean you don't need to buy the dog? Yeah, of course, and you gotta, you're going to home people, you gotta go outside, down, you don't need to. Uh our goal here is to support these small local businesses and to create a walking community. Uh it's active people uh by walking, uh it can be a a teaching property. Um and. You can also have a nursing care office, a small dental office in the second uh second uh second story. Uh it's a and then also create a welcome, a social environment for the solid community. Uh you know, as Jimmy talked about, the under. Uh the bigger uh on that you see in the middle with the green, green, green path area around. Uh you know, you plan to do a a small um farmer's market. Very hard to see, you know, these kind of things incorporated in a in a development anymore, because all these big companies. Are looking to a profit, and there's nothing wrong with it, but here, obviously, you know, this is gonna be a profitable venture. But we are not gearing towards profit, we're gearing toward how we create a a unique community which serves all the products. For for people living in the community, and then people living around the community, so farmer market. Uh and then we're also looking at doing uh your uh. Uh small pens where we can bring animals from. Other places where animals are stray dog, animals, dogs, cats, and then you give them home. Uh you know, uh just to let you know that I started eating. Meat and dairy about eight years ago, because I care about my meat. And I'm living perfectly fine, thank God, I'm happy, I mean, I'm I'm healthy than ever before. Uh so, you know, we we wanna create a a community where the community is intended to uh be. Um are we gonna be one hundred percent successful? I don't know, but if you don't plan something, you're never gonna get it, if you don't execute something, it's it's never gonna happen. Um we'll also have a a community center where we have a zoo, gym, swimming pool, a garden hall, and a community kitchen. If you wanna go a birthday party, you only can go to a McDonald's or a Burger King or some any kind of place to do a birthday party. Uh I'm not saying that it can be all doing that, but if you have a community kitchen, it wouldn't be nice to get together. Make food and then enjoy after afterwards. That's the community that we we want to create. Uh and again, you know, we're not coming up with the same with with a thousand townhomes and say, hey, this is what my project is. And you take it or leave it, or we're not coming here to the highland town, you know, the single land loans, and then this is what we really plan. We are open to. Any kind of sudden from community, that's why we did a community meeting before coming to this this council uh last month. And we had six of thousand community members going in during our online meeting, and we had a very fantastic. Um discussed, and we were able to answer questions from the community members. So this is, but this is a rezoning application, rezoning project. Uh and we are willing to work with the community uh to do whatever it takes, as long as it makes sense. Uh to work with the community and come up with a a good uh a development, a good committee that we can be, we are empowered. Thank you.
Well, thank you, now, listen, what you say, I think you have very nice plans here, like you said. Oh, and I'm sure you're aware, uh our community that we're in now is rather diverse. And uh with that said, there's a lot of large range in uh. Uh household eating. And one of the things that uh we're probably short on here as far as housing goes. Is uh lack of, better term, workforce, housing, you know, we've got a lot of things going on. I was just curious, and I know it's somewhere out there in the future, and it's gonna be a best business. But what kind of uh price range will generally speaking, will. This community generate? I mean, I I know it. Billy talks about a lot of all that, but so what you, you know, what you're saying that you.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for a very important question. Um that's exactly why you wanna create, you wanna do what we wanna do, those townhouses, you see? Those are four hundred to fifteen hundred square townhouses. If somebody wants to make bigger, I mean, we we you know, this is a market, we have to uh listen to the, you know, to your customers. But what we wanna do, we wanna create a an entry level homes. Which are affordable, because they're smaller in size, they may not have all the depth and width. But they will be uh sustainable, because we're gonna implement a smaller channel in all of our homes. So that your energy cost is nearly zero. Uh we can guarantee this, you can't control the nature, sometimes you get some, some, sometimes you don't. But we're gonna implement the uh and then we're also gonna do uh uh. Smart uh appliances, so that's gonna also help create, help lower the cost of utility. So we are going in, cost will be low, so to answer your question, and the way the situation is going, it's very hard for me to sit here and say, this house, if the house is gonna be. But but my idea is lower two hundred thousand dollars to start for an entry level townhouse. But then when you go to single land homes, it all depends on what size you wanna build, and it will be. But I don't foresee any houses there being right there in the trade economy. Five, six, or seven thousand dollars, these are gonna be uh variety of, that's why you have apartments. Where a daughter, my my daughter sees the, just when she graduated from Irish of Iowa, she's gonna go to law school, so when she hears about it. It's some somebody like her could come in, rent an apartment, and then eventually in a couple of years. Buy a uh townhouses, and then also, you know, if you're going to a bigger one. So it will be a multi-genius of uh community, and this is exactly what we wanna do, that's why we're gonna have apartments. So people can rent, and then townhouses, uh entry level townhouses, and then obviously single land homes.
Thank you, that was a good night.
Any other questions?
You mentioned that there will be openings for the citizens inside our city, but what restrictions will there be for citizens who may want to come in there?
Uh I don't think there are any restrictions, and it's just like any other uh any other uh community around. It it's open to any business, it's open to anyone, every community center, uh you know, obviously, if you'd be first come, first served. If it's if it's only book, you can read it, but if it's not book, somebody wants to uh party party. Or somebody wants to come in and use the library, it's gonna be open to both. This is not excluding a hidden or something inside, you know, a curtain. And this is gonna be just like any other community, and then we, my daughter and I just enjoy the coffee at the coffee shop and now nowadays, just like that. Gonna be wide open to public for anyone using it. Obviously, it's a community, so you may not, I mean, it may not, because maybe it is a swimming pool, and people have a swimming pool at the community center. If somebody wants to play eleven P M. at night, no, yeah, together, we have rooms and everything. But it is open to be, pockets, open to pocket, so I don't see any restrictions and rules for anything.
You also mentioned something about senior living.
Yes, ma'am.
What is that, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so it's gonna be a uh, so there is a, we are uh proposing a senior uh care center. So basically, once. I'm not able to cook or take care of myself in my single family, then I would like to go to a place where. Uh nurse can take care of me, nurse can, you know, give me a medicine, remind me when to take the medicine. And then there's a food for me to, you know, walk or in the common winter, and I can either go down myself or. I need to help, somebody can come in and, you know, bring food, that's, I mean, just like your regular nursing. Uh so we're proposing about three hundred bit nursing for a different kind of state. Uh but that's, I, you know, I think that's gonna be about eighteen years down the road, that's that's our last step on our business.
Is this gonna be a game of security of?
It's not, no, it's it's a while.
Who would manage security with me?
Security, I mean, you know, I believe in solid safety, and you say community, and when you have any possibility, you keep very safer, and otherwise. And, you know, we rely on the city to to make the community safe, that we need it. Uh you know, I don't foresee a great company, we kind of thought about it before, but then we step away from, you know, having gated on. Uh so we, if you wanna make this a open community that anyone, you know, can come in and be part of.
I'm gonna ask you a question that I get asked, I don't know how many times a week. You having food with Starbucks? Yeah, I saw a retail space on there, I get asked that at least two or three times every week, I'm gonna get in Starbucks.
Yeah, you know, I can push that person, yeah, you know, pushing out, yes, Starbucks, I mean, you know, I I currently want about ten, twelve hundred nine times.
Yeah, well, I dare a little bit.
So we have to, yeah, I'm getting, there is a demand, obviously, you know, we can all provide that, provide service.
Other questions? For the board? Thank you very much for that presentation.
My name is William Work, I'm some of the design engineer, I'm the engineer that has done some of the preliminary analysis of the engineering components on this site. Um I'll talk to you quickly about a few of them, stormwater, wetland and buffer. Preservation, erosion control, or construction utilities, and a little bit about traffic. So starting with stormwater, you can see on the map there and in your packets, the blue ponds that are scattered across the site strategically located. At uh existing low points as well as anticipated low points that we determined through some some preliminary grading. Basically, you have a site right now that has a certain cover condition, uh woods, uh field. Uh it has a certain runoff rate at the edge of the property where runoff is measured. Once you build out the subdivision, those cover conditions change and runoff increase. And the ponds are located to intercept that runoff, retain it, and control the release of that water slowly. Um through engineered uh stormwater outlets in those ponds. Weapons and buffers, or excuse me, weapons and streams have been located on the property already through the process that. Um is regulated by the Corps, uh the Army Corps of Engineers and N C B E Q. They have all been preserved in buffers on this land. And they will be protected um during construction and in perpetuity. Um throughout the development's life. The impact to those uh buffers or streams like crossing, of which there are a few, will be permitted through the North. Chairman of the Department of Environmental Quality and the United States Army Corps of Engineers. Um during construction, we'll have, we'll implement road control devices, a few of important ones are super so fence across the perimeter to protect. Uh surface runoff, uh as well as temporary sediment basins in the same footprints where those ponds are located. So that flooding during construction is retained uh before the subdivision is finished. That'll reduce some of your uh orange water you see flowing offside and into stream during that process. All of those structures, all the original design and sequencing will be controlled, uh will be designed. Uh by the regulations that are currently in place by Chad County and design standards given by the state and their controlling it. Utility brought up, uh currently we're showing your packets, uh pump station right now in preliminary analysis. Um we've determined that that uh is one of the ones needed to get the first few phases through construction. Um as mentioned by Jimmy, the project is based that that the utility load on this, on the city system will be gradual. And will not overwhelm uh the wastewater treatment facilities. Right now, that's the only one, that pump station is the only one that's planned on site, and um. More more analysis to be done to locate uh to locate others. As far as traffic, we have completed a traffic. If for in uh traffic impact analysis that has been reviewed by the D O T and Silent City. That has recommended several road improvements at the entrances, as well as uh. At a few offsite locations, and the developer is committed to making all of those improvements as basing dictates and construction of this project. Also note is the railroad crossing, so we've been in conversation with the D O T rail, with the D O T. Um and others regarding the process for handling railroad crossing. And the developer is committed to continuing that conversation and finding a solution to achieve the crossing. And if not, will look for other, I mean, acceptable solution. So with that, are there any questions for me?
Yes, I was asking you about the sewer pump station.
Yeah.
You're gonna have one main station. And these other phases come in. Are you gonna try to gravity to that, or are you gonna have to have satellite pumps?
Are you gonna try to gravity to that or are you gonna have to have satellite pump station?
That would be ideal to be able to gravity, it's a big site, uh a lot of the earthwork can balance such that. The sewer could gravity to that pump station. However, as we go into design, as it's phased design, we will um sketch out a development schedule. And the load that pump station inherits throughout those years. And if more necessary, we'll locate them as those phases are permitted for construction.
Well, your own pump station, once it's built, completed and in service, you will accrue, accrue operator and keep the maintenance and all that.
Uh that has not been determined at this time. But it will be a, it will be a conversation going into design and it will be determined before it's fully permitted and put into use. In the first phase.
Just, but I'm sure it's probably a fair comment. Probably won't, so the, the, I'm assuming by the, the uh. Enters the drive across the, so the gate, why it is.
Assuming since this is in the E T J, is the expectation that this, that this site plan would be, uh, be. Uh applying voluntary annexation?
Um yes, that is the plan, okay, right here.
About the, about the infrastructure, but uh it's waters who already have that along the loss river.
Water has to be extended down um from the other side of uh four twenty one. And we have in the packets on the. Um preliminary site plan, we have a sewer outfall to the um current sewer manhole up four twenty one, which is. Plan north on that.
That part of the water need to be extended.
I can't, that's all complimented.
It's clear as you.
The third reward stop, the autumn drop. And the county picks it up from the parish, so they could do county waters, they want us to opt out from that.
Okay. Can I ask some questions?
All right, thank you very much for that.
You can read, I'm sure you guys are ready to move on, you know, but I just want, my name is Josh Bora, I own Pel Construction and Transom Petroleum Group. My main purpose, my name is talking honestly about Brad a little bit and my experience with him. I've been, I own companies for twelve years, we've done projects all over the United States and I've worked on multiple developers. I met Brad about seven years ago on a small project in Chicago and we did that project for him, it was a hotel renovation. And through that process, he had a multiple option for the times to. Do this type of project or this type of project. And every time he chose to do the option that best served the guests, they were gonna come to that whole time, no matter what financial impact. So at that point, we started building a relationship, like third C, he wanted not just as a developer, but as a person. And we'll fast forward over that, there is a project that he had, he purchased a hotel, and we visited it. He doesn't really go, oh, another renovation for that. And at that point, I think we're about sixty days with, we were starting that renovation and Hurricane, I got. Get home and it completely devastated that hotel. So terrible with the parish wouldn't allow anybody into that area for five days. So good day, I showed up there, I showed up there. I flew in, he drove in and what he had with him was a trailer and behind it. He brought in water, he brought in food, he brought in generators, it wasn't the hotel that he was worried about, it was all the staff and all the people over there. Despite the hotel being a total loss, it took a year here and four months to put back together. That's obedience, so when he talks about this development and the fact that he's gonna live here. Then I think that's a huge just in my eyes, to who he is and. I guess he's, you know, when he bought the land, he called it up, told him the vision. We came here, we visited, walked site, to the point where, I got a wife, three little ones, they're here, in a hotel room. When he talks about when this goes through, and we've been here, we're gonna be here with him for ten years, we're gonna be here. So now it's a professional investment for us, it was a personal investment for us. Cause I do believe in this project, I do believe in this great style of stuff. And I hope you guys have seen that between some of, or as, and I think you're getting your community, community members. So that's really all I have, I just wanna let you guys know, from a personal standpoint, you may be citizens. Based on that, you should always base that on your persons.
Need to quit?
Thank you.
Um good evening, my name is Angela Mannet, I am the daughter of the spouse who read Andy here. Um obviously, you know, as a daughter, I will hardly support um whatever projects and developments he's doing. But I don't wanna talk about this project in a more independent manner, away from being his daughter, but as someone. Um coming in, I recently graduated college, actually this two days ago, um but I really do believe in this project and I wanted to come in from Ireland today. Uh to kind of talk about how I see this project being not only a positive impact to Southern City, but also people from uh my generation. Uh so I think one of the biggest things that I've seen over the last few years, uh seeing my daughter come to this project, it's his main goals. Uh working on the environment, making sure the environment's truly friendly, having a place. Uh not only for, you know, older generations to live in, but intergenerational uh facility. Where you can have young adults like me, uh starting off their careers, um living in apartments and townhomes. Uh kind of progressing on to start their own families, um owning a small home, family home. And then having, you know, your grandparents, your cousins, your family, all having a welcoming community for everyone to grow up in and spend time in. Uh while also enjoying the natural environment and the beautiful weather here in Carolina. Um I think it's really fun, a natural, a really neat idea, uh that's coming in and having a place where the community can come together. Um use the different aquatic facilities, the community centers, um having the walkable trails, having farmers markets. I think it's something that my generation is starting to find the value in, uh as we want to uh kind of move into having more walkable areas. Um supporting call within the community and things like that. Uh and again, the huge emphasis on generational livability, uh I think it's a, a unique idea and a great. Um a great way to grow up with the different generations of your family together and having a family close by. Uh I was, when I went, like I said, I just graduated from university and plan on going to law school there. But after that, I do plan to practice law here in Carolina. And being able to have a development in a place like this would allow me to be here by parents, to practice what I want to do. Uh to raise my family here and to help develop the economy here in Southern City as a whole. Uh and I think a facility and a development like this can really truly uh improve not only the community. Uh but bring in, uh you know, a frustrated idea, uh a new generation of people and help the community. Thank you.
Any questions? None, completely none.
You did the thought, um, that, um, you did right away and then, uh. Wanna start your career, so we'll say for instance, and, and this is, I guess, a legal thing. Uh we have teachers who are starting at. And if they're looking for an apartment to live. Their starting salary is just thirty seven thousand dollars a year, can they afford?
Um you know, I can't be, uh per se, on the technicalities of advice and the insurance and things like that, but I do think a lot of that comes in. Um with the future development of the city and of the, of the state, um you know, different laws and trying to progress that there. But if there is not communicating environment where um there are places to be successful, for you know, teachers. Um community, community members today, um I think if that's not okay, it was, you know, one, one of the things.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Any other presenters? Your group, am I, am I allowed back to comment? Uh I think there's somebody that might, might phone.
That's the other one presenting, so we can have questions.
If you signed up to speak. Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, I got to rebrief. Yeah, it's, there's several folks that have signed up to speak.
This one, you're indicating on this about?
Yeah.
On Mr. Hancock is the sign that, I just wanna answer your question that, to my daughter. So again, you don't know how much the rent is gonna be, there are a lot of factors in play. But the idea of making a mystery developer. To having the retail on the first floor, having office on the second floor, and then a part of the above is to lower the cost down of the development. Rather than having one big building with the, the, and then the idea is people who work in the coffee shop or who work in a grocery store. Can have a chance to live upstairs so that they're not looking in mind by driving car, they're not, you know, creating traffic congestion. Be by, by, you know, committing to money, going to money, go away from your home, that is. Uh that, that is, that is the trend that's going to be mixing why, because you can't really build overnight. So you wanna contain the community, not by force, by creating amenities. So that's the whole idea about basically community, so that you can have somebody working in a coffee shop or restaurant. Can stay there hopefully, not go there before the end, so that's all.
All right, yeah, several people have signed up to speak here in Soreton Rounder. Each person will have three minutes to speak, uh in the town court, keep a record of the time. And when you hear her speak, I mean, what was the signal?
Time.
Yeah. But she gave, she gave you a little bit of, thirty seconds, so the fourth of something like that, saying you could finish it up. And when you come to the podium, you would state your name and address and we can record that for the record. Uh the first person to sign it, uh John Nash.
Sir, I will say, if there's a handout left, sir. It was going, once you notice and you wanna welcome to that, I'm gonna pass up the woman there when he said it.
If you wanna go first, he gonna let you do it, so he.
I didn't know how many people, but you can.
Well, there's a whole thing, go ahead. Is invited for. That's yours, boy.
Fair enough, fair enough. Uh, thank you for the, for speaking tonight, uh my name is John Nash, eighteen oh nine, creative. I run a small business called Cala Lands. Uh we're a brokerage firm that focuses on raw land, so raw land being timberland, agricultural land, land that is not developed. Um I had no skin in this game whatsoever in terms of this project, I did not help a buyer or seller. Uh but I had worked with Brad Brandon in the past, uh I've known Brad for a few years now. Uh and helped him in other parts of North Carolina with some development. Uh in my business, uh I do get asked by developers on occasion to speak on their behalf. Uh got a lot of benefit to me in that, uh because I'm just a broker. But uh, ninety nine percent of the time, I'm willing to climb. Um Brad did reach out to me, uh and I was more than happy to come to Southern City and say just a few words on, on Brad and his character. As I said, I've worked with a, a lot of developers that work on these, what I call fringe developments outside of towns, uh that we need to be annexed in. Uh but these are the guys that have a vision, when you look at a stand of trees, that you see opportunity there. Uh it's hard to break into that, especially if you're not from this area. Uh but I do wanna stick my neck out a little bit on behalf of Brad. Brad, as I said, I've worked with him for a couple of years now, uh he's extremely fair and middle. Uh he's one that is methodical in his developments and he's one that listens. Uh he's willing to bend in order to create a better development here, uh I've seen him do it in other places. Uh the guy has not only an incredible story, but he does have an incredible work, work ethic. Uh and he's intimately involved in the project. This is not one of a hundred projects that he's got going on right now today. Uh he calls me weekly and I'm literally not even involved in this project. Um I did help with the land management side and timber harvesting, of which I'm happy to answer any questions that, what remains out there and what will be being planted back. Uh I hope to help in that process. But when Brad came to me initially, uh he asked me to over speed the timber harvest that track. Uh I've never seen a developer keep more than a hundred feet of buffer as much as possible. There's a lot of value in those trees that he.
Twenty seconds.
Okay, uh and then we also left all the harvests, the harvests are bringing in wildlife, that was an important part of it. I'm really only bringing wildlife, I will end by saying that Southern City's motto is balance for progress. It's a balanced project, this is an incredible opportunity, but the man is gonna be intimately involved.
Time.
Next up, Dwight Thesen.
Uh thank you for having me today, uh I'm really from DeMora County. But the reason I wanted to come here today is just sort of bring y'all up a little bit, Brad.
If you would, state your name and wrist.
Oh, my name is Dwight Thesen, from Robbins, North Carolina. And uh the reason I'm here is this sort of bring you up on the kind of person he is. Uh leased the property in two thousand and seven. And then it changed and Brad bought it. And I've, I've known him a short period of time, but he's always had the time for me. You know, to talk to me and he cared enough that I enjoyed the land. After he bought it, he continued to let me do it the same way. And you don't find many people. Uh that's got that much time for you, you know, I'm just a farmer, my way of being a cattle, and I spend a lot of time in Southern City parks. People, the whole nine yards, but. I really like what Brad is trying to do here, because he, he's looking after not just a few people, the community. And he believe in a lot of the natural that Southern City has always been noted for its content. And you know, my parents love, I love, I've spent probably more time here than I do of more than. But anyway, Brad sees that and it's, uh, it, it looks like he is planning. To have something not for just a few people, but for a lot of people to enjoy. And I really firsthand know that property. As good as I did before. I've been on it, like I said, ever since two thousand and seven and Johnny there has farmed it, but. The property can really, it can really improve Southern City and itself. Because what he's gonna do with it, it's uh, even back in the olden time when Mr. Hancock had it. They was talking about Rock, where I was interested in it at the time. And it was something like. And it was something like making the braggles, so Robert Hancock, man, he told me all about it, but anyway, it fell through. But something like.
Twenty seconds.
Fits it to do, oh, excuse me, but it, it's a wonderful project for all of Silver City. And just like you pointed out with the teachers and we need more teachers. I hope my grandchild will be one, but anyway, it's a good place for the, uh, joining more brand dogs.
Wow.
Excuse me, and thank you very much for having me.
Thank you very much. Next up, Ray. You're on here. And, and, okay. Uh, get it, Frank? Are you doing it? Uh, DM Ashley? This is going real well. Well, this is going to be. Bob. Yes, Bob Kay. We're hoping to leave it at that. Now I hear you. Pretty good name and address.
Going to know that. Uh, Johnny, bigger twenty forty, I grew up South here. Uh, I've known Brad about three years. He spent a lot of time in our book before he started all this. He marked all the trails, all the waterways. Believe what he said, what he's going to do. I believe he'd be a good asset south and he's done good to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Harris.
Uh, we take y'all out this evening. I'm Scott Harris, sixty-four, sixty-one, Carvington Road, Sanford, North Carolina. Uh, I'm a business owner, real estate broker here in Silver City. Uh, worked with Brad often on me for a year, maybe two years, I forget the, the exact. Uh, during the whole time, Brad has been the most professional, uh, one of the most professional people I've known. He's, he's done everything he said he's going to do. Worked with a lot of developers that want to tie up a piece of real estate. They want to go for six months and say, hey, see if we can stretch it out another six months. Brad didn't do that. He, he believes in investment here in Silver City. He purchased the property, lives in all of his plants. Uh, as you all know, here in Silver City, for many years, young kids go to school here, graduate high school, go to college. They can't come back here because there's no jobs for them. We'll see a bunch of other companies coming to town. They're going to change that. What Brad is proposing is to have this multi-generational community where all these Silver City folks can have the generations of the family stay right here. So, uh, I'm all for the claim and, uh, recommend that it's a good group. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Jack Summers. Please, state your name and address, please.
Josh Summers, two, two, three, three, one, Zelen Avenue, Charlotte. And, um.
No, he's, he's not in the long case.
All right, thank you. Okay. If you're. Okay, that works. Yeah. Pass your name again, I'll butcher.
Edward Sirgani.
Sirgani, yeah.
Three, twenty, second floor, Hillsboro. Uh, I'm with Brad and the development team. Uh, I signed up mostly during a question. Uh, I was responsible for the traffic analysis that we've done, so uh, I'm against the call and the trade portion of that, so I will go with this. So that's all I was going to say for, for now.
William. Did we, we asked me? Oh. Rosa Purcell. Can you name your name and address, please?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Rosa Purcell. Thirty-two oh eight Almwood Road in Greensboro, North Carolina. I am here in support of this project, wide liar in support of it, and joins my group. So it's good to see that someone has an interest in enhancing the development of that area. I grew up on, um, Lawson Road, so I know it very well, from four twenty-one to Benin Highway. Uh, that has always been an area that I enjoy. And to see progress coming for, uh, for the city, I think it's going to be wonderful. As long as they, and I feel sure that this will help to enhance what's taking place and what they're talking about. It's pretty much what I think will help bring progress to our little area, Lawson Road. So I say, I think this is, will be an excellent way of enhancing progress in Silver City. I know it's true that we need that multiple to the rest of the field.
Thank you very much. All right, Murris. Do I need to go over our papers, please, from here? If, if, if you can, it would be better, better to record it over there, please. Up quite as you have, but you spoke.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Bertie Snackcock. And, uh, I was born and raised here in Silver City, lived here all my life. In fact, I've lived, uh, for the last forty years or so, a butter cough road from this proposed development.
And the address where you live now is what? The address?
I'm sorry.
The address?
Oh, my, uh, my address is two sixty-four Lawson Road.
Thank you.
Uh, when I first heard of that project, I was a little bit concerned and apprehensive. We've got a wonderful nature good out there, got a lot of wildlife, deer, foxes, turkeys. It's just a peaceful area. And so natural health concern. But the more I looked into it, the more I'm convinced that this is just what we need here in Silver City. I saw a while ago when they were going through the budget, one of the goals was to encourage housing development. And to me, this is just the five thousand development we need. I've talked to, uh, Brad and a lot of his associates. And he's put together what I consider is a real quality team. And I've got every confidence that they will do exactly what they've said. I'll check on some of their other, other projects. And I'm told that they've always, with those, uh, they have a good reputation, they do what they say, you can depend on them. And, uh, so I'd just like to ask y'all to look with favor on this application and do what's in this support program. So.
All right, that completes the comment part. Any questions from the board or anything? So next, they can, or you can leave it, uh, open just while you deliberate in case you want to ask the thing, another question or something. So, uh, leave it open. All right, what's, you have any questions with the special, the board, any question on like that?
I mean, I'm not normally one to, to fear from what the, um, planning board usually recommend, but I'm interested in, in character, maybe you can help answer, what, what was, what was the reasoning? The planning board wanted to, or they recommended not?
Um, when the planning board deliberated, they did not really elaborate on their, um, decision. They just stated that they found that it was inconsistent, um, with the area. And one thing I wanted to kindly explain while I'm up here, um, the consistency and reason on this statement, um, if you look at it, it's a little bit different because due to some changes with one sixty D, um, we had to update the way that we're making decisions a little bit. Um, if you find that this is consistent, you just need to read the statement and say that it's consistent with the goals of the strategic plan and land development plan. And also state that you find that it is, um, reasonable and there's a reasonableness statement in, in that on a set up.
Just, just to, so the, so that what we're doing is, is that the very top is consistent or inconsistent? Do we need, do we need to specifically state each, each item?
No, you can just say that if you find that it's consistent with the, uh, the items identified below as well as it is reasonable with the, the items and what.
Sorry, okay. First, no, sorry. There, there. People talking. I can deal with it. If I got a little quick. Am I good?
Okay, sorry. We're closing the period. All right, that, boy, this, the wish.
Uh, I'll make a motion in pursuit to North Carolina General Statute Sections one sixty D dash six oh four and six oh five. The board finds proposed zoning map amendment in case R twenty-three zero five zero one is consistent with Town of Silver City's land development plan. Following analysis examining proposed amendment relative to the goals and land use policies and the adopted strategic plan is presented in our packet. Proposed zoning amendment is reasonable in the public interest because it supports the policies of the land development plan, the town's strategic plan, uh, because of the, the items noted in our packet.
All right, that motion, sir. We have a motion to say, is there any discussion, questions or anything? You know, goes to vote, all of the favor seen, I was saying, ah, all those, those lights on. And the motion period. Okay, uh. Let's see.
We need to, do we need to, to do anything with this, um, amendment, this, uh, ordinance amending the zoning map? Okay.
I'm good, we've been here for a little while. What do y'all think about taking about like five minutes reset, whatever you got to do? And, uh, and we'll meet back in here after eighteen, be back in here about eighteen, nineteen. Very, very good.
I'm just thinking. 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 I'm just thinking.[479.71][479.74][S04. I'm just thinking. 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 I'm just thinking.[496.21][496.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[497.31][497.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[498.41][498.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[499.51][499.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[500.61][500.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[501.71][501.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[502.81][502.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[503.91][503.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[505.01][505.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[506.11][506.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[507.21][507.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[508.31][508.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[509.41][509.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[510.51][510.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[511.61][511.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[512.71][512.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[513.81][513.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[514.91][514.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[516.01][516.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[517.11][517.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[518.21][518.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[519.31][519.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[520.41][520.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[521.51][521.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[522.61][522.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[523.71][523.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[524.81][524.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[525.91][525.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[527.01][527.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[528.11][528.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[529.21][529.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[530.31][530.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[531.41][531.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[532.51][532.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[533.61][533.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[534.71][534.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[535.81][535.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[536.91][536.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[538.01][538.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[539.11][539.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[540.21][540.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[541.31][541.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[542.41][542.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[543.51][543.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[544.61][544.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[545.71][545.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[546.81][546.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[547.91][547.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[549.01][549.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[550.11][550.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[551.21][551.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[552.31][552.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[553.41][553.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[554.51][554.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[555.61][555.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[556.71][556.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[557.81][557.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[558.91][558.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[559.91][559.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[561.01][561.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[562.11][562.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[563.21][563.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[564.31][564.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[565.41][565.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[566.51][566.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[567.61][567.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[568.71][568.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[569.81][569.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[570.91][570.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[572.01][572.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[573.11][573.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[574.21][574.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[575.31][575.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[576.41][576.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[577.51][577.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[578.61][578.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[579.71][579.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[580.81][580.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[581.91][581.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[583.01][583.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[584.11][584.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[585.21][585.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[586.31][586.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[587.41][587.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[588.51][588.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[589.61][589.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[590.71][590.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[591.81][591.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[592.91][592.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[594.01][594.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[595.11][595.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[596.21][596.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[597.31][597.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[598.41][598.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[599.51][599.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[600.61][600.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[601.71][601.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[602.81][602.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[603.91][603.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[605.01][605.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[606.11][606.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[607.21][607.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[608.31][608.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[609.41][609.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[610.51][610.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[611.61][611.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[612.71][612.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[613.81][613.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[614.91][614.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[616.01][616.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[617.11][617.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[618.21][618.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[619.31][619.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[620.41][620.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[621.51][621.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[622.61][622.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[623.71][623.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[624.81][624.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[625.91][625.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[627.01][627.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[628.11][628.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[629.21][629.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[630.31][630.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[631.41][631.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[632.51][632.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[633.61][633.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[634.71][634.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[635.81][635.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[636.91][636.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[638.01][638.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[639.11][639.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[640.21][640.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[641.31][641.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[642.41][642.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[643.51][643.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[644.61][644.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[645.71][645.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[646.81][646.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[647.91][647.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[649.01][649.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[650.11][650.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[651.21][651.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[652.31][652.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[653.41][653.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[654.51][654.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[655.61][655.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[656.71][656.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[657.81][657.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[658.91][658.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[659.91][659.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[661.01][661.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[662.11][662.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[663.21][663.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[664.31][664.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[665.41][665.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[666.51][666.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[667.61][667.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[668.71][668.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[669.81][669.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[670.91][670.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[672.01][672.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[673.11][673.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[674.21][674.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[675.31][675.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[676.41][676.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[677.51][677.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[678.61][678.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[679.71][679.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[680.81][680.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[681.91][681.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[683.01][683.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[684.11][684.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[685.21][685.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[686.31][686.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[687.41][687.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[688.51][688.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[689.61][689.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[690.71][690.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[691.81][691.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[692.91][692.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[694.01][694.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[695.11][695.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[696.21][696.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[697.31][697.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[698.41][698.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[699.51][699.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[700.61][700.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[701.71][701.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[702.81][702.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[703.91][703.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[705.01][705.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[706.11][706.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[707.21][707.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[708.31][708.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[709.41][709.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[710.51][710.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[711.61][711.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[712.71][712.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[713.81][713.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[714.91][714.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[716.01][716.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[717.11][717.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[718.21][718.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[719.31][719.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[720.41][720.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[721.51][721.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[722.61][722.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[723.71][723.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[724.81][724.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[725.91][725.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[727.01][727.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[728.11][728.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[729.21][729.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[730.31][730.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[731.41][731.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[732.51][732.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[733.61][733.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[734.71][734.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[735.81][735.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[736.91][736.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[738.01][738.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[739.11][739.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[740.21][740.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[741.31][741.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[742.41][742.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[743.51][743.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[744.61][744.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[745.71][745.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[746.81][746.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[747.91][747.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[749.01][749.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[750.11][750.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[751.21][751.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[752.31][752.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[753.41][753.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[754.51][754.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[755.61][755.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[756.71][756.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[757.81][757.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[758.91][758.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[759.91][759.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[761.01][761.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[762.11][762.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[763.21][763.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[764.31][764.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[765.41][765.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[766.51][766.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[767.61][767.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[768.71][768.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[769.81][769.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[770.91][770.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[772.01][772.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[773.11][773.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[774.21][774.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[775.31][775.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[776.41][776.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[777.51][777.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[778.61][778.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[779.71][779.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[780.81][780.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[781.91][781.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[783.01][783.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[784.11][784.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[785.21][785.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[786.31][786.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[787.41][787.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[788.51][788.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[789.61][789.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[790.71][790.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[791.81][791.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[792.91][792.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[794.01][794.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[795.11][795.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[796.21][796.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[797.31][797.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[798.41][798.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[799.51][799.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[800.61][800.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[801.71][801.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[802.81][802.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[803.91][803.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[805.01][805.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[806.11][806.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[807.21][807.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[808.31][808.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[809.41][809.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[810.51][810.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[811.61][811.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[812.71][812.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[813.81][813.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[814.91][814.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[816.01][816.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[817.11][817.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[818.21][818.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[819.31][819.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[820.41][820.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[821.51][821.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[822.61][822.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[823.71][823.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[824.81][824.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[825.91][825.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[827.01][827.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[828.11][828.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[829.21][829.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[830.31][830.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[831.41][831.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[832.51][832.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[833.61][833.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[834.71][834.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[835.81][835.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[836.91][836.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[838.01][838.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[839.11][839.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[840.21][840.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[841.31][841.34][S04. I'm just thinking.[842.41][842.44][S04. I'm just thinking.[843.51][843.54][S04. I'm just thinking.[844.61][844.64][S04. I'm just thinking.[845.71][845.74][S04. I'm just thinking.[846.81][846.84][S04. I'm just thinking.[847.91][847.94][S04. I'm just thinking.[849.01][849.04][S04. I'm just thinking.[850.11][850.14][S04. I'm just thinking.[851.21][851.24][S04. I'm just thinking.[852.31][852.34][S04. I'm just thinking.
And the rest of the zone properties would be, the properties in. These are just a couple of pictures of the adjacent properties. Um, to the east. To the east is baking property, the baking property, um, below, obviously, it's a four as well as a little bit. Because there's a little bit of farm structure. To the west is vacant property and across the street is also vacant. The options for tonight is our approval of the amendment to having pilot commercial. Um, and the zoning is consistent. Um, with the lanes, the Sylar City Land Development Plan, there will be no change to on the land development plan given this item or denial of the recommendation. There's that presentation that is here tonight to speak in behalf of his application. Are there any questions to say?
Well, just, and maybe this, maybe this comes in a later today, you know, uh, you know, one of the discussions that we've been having is more each down in the town of having interconnectivity, you know, without having so many driveways or access points, you know, on sixty four there. And I don't know if this enters into this or not, because it's, it's different, but is that maybe even need to consider? I don't know what to do.
Correct, the advocate has not identified a percentage of site plan. That will be part of the site plan process and he might have provide, he would provide stuff to different property or, um, for example, for the highway for the property that's to the east of him. Provide some kind of connectivity with them where there's a cross connection and they might have like a shared driveway. Because that property is undeveloped as well as this property.
Yeah, and what I'm thinking is, you know, people going west, just come out of the city limits, just move top of the hill. They matched accelerator to the floor, we're trying to keep that at the speed and, you know, it's just, just on.
Correct, that would, that would come into the site development process, um, between in a discussion with our public streets as well as with DOT, since it is a DOT vote. They would have to figure out the driveway permits and connection together.
Anything? Anything? Great, so do you think that?
I'm back, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, that view is amazing, but not bigger, isn't it?
Yeah, you're the presenter.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, I've been involved with Sylar City since two thousand nineteen, I've just been working on shopping center in July, two thousand nineteen. We actually have these stations and planes for that location as well. Um, all of the violent areas in different areas there and hybrid based on relationships currently in my holdings. I have like, I think white chicken and wild these buffalo, wild these, Panera, Chipotle, Starbucks. And, and people like that that I work with in other cities throughout the southeast. So, as they said, I do not have a firm plan, but as the formulas, these could be huge based on traffic channels, population density, things like that, then they'll be ready to come, they're all being looking. They know they know that, and they wouldn't be able to. So, I'm just prepared that we, that's all. The purchase of land, we're asking for more things so that we can take it to the next step.
Any questions? It's. Thank you. Any questions? Anybody else? Yeah. Anything? All right. That's pretty straightforward. Ready, close of the hearing. Now, close of the hearing, five point two. Right, what is consent, this is the vote.
Well, I'll make a motion pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one sixty, section one sixty D dash six oh four and six oh five. The board finds most zoning map amendment in case R twenty three dash zero five zero one is consistent with the town of Sylar City's two thousand seventeen land development plan, uh, based on the reasoning in our packet.
So. One, you have a motion and you have a second, is there any current discussion, question? Any none, good for both, all those in favor taking the pile of saying aye, all those opposed like sign, open the hearing. No, yes, follow. Well, there's enough land to get by. All right. Next. This is the vote here, five point three, payer term. We'll open that. We, we didn't table this when the thing happened.
No, it was advertised, uh, pursuant to this action for tonight and you won't take action, but action tonight. Always should take action without the ordinance amending the term and the resolution set in the referendum. But this next meeting, uh, it could be the next one after that, but it worked too long, I think. Uh, um, with odd, the, the, the.
So, what did you do to this?
Open the hearing, as if we want, is here to speak.
Got it. Now, in the hearing, five point two or twenty three day, oh five oh one.
Uh, it wasn't designed to change, uh, so. Just take speakers.
Anybody else speaking this issue or it's, it's about putting on a ballot from, from the mayor's term for two years before you? Yeah. Thinking, what? I'm just thinking. You think he named that, Greg?
Oh, I was prepared for this, Ron Dameron, seven oh eight, oh, out of the west. Uh, four hundred and fifty five, when this county's in North Carolina. Uh, I think I got it right, that we're the only one that does two years instead of four years. And, uh, people have elected to make rulings in there at once where they all get beat. And if everything has been on the ballot, then I think we have a real long path of this stuff building up. So, I just feel like it should be y'all's responsibility to do what you're supposed to for the public, which is ruling whatever they say fit. But remember, this is a hundred and forty plus years ago. Yeah. Give me a break. Uh, when the, the mayor was supposed to clean up after horses and everything else, he didn't like what he did and everyone didn't fire him. We got somebody else going in, two years. So, basically, this, you can't see us do anything different than what the rest of the state does, which is four years. That's all we have.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else space to speak?
We might, we might, we might. I mean, I'll, I'll make, make one comment, I think that the, um, you know, we, we did this public hearing. We, you know, we could have done, we could have made this decision already, but we're choosing to put this on the ballot in, in November. So, I think that we're, we're, we've had the public hearing, we're gonna, you know, listen to, to the, uh, to Mr. Dameron, I, you know, I would agree with you, I think we, you know, be consistent with the rest of the state, but certainly it's gonna be the, um, you know, the, 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 uh, community members that have the final say, so I, I appreciate the opportunity.
In the end. All right, now we close the hearing. You may take a vote on it.
That's it, we have the ordinance and also a resolution that sets that request to more of the elections, all of the, all of, uh, should be made.
All right. All business, off to record.
Uh, Mayor, I have Daniel Ralwinkis from Williams County, now he came to the quick, uh, update about the current state of our parks restoration match plan. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you council members and thank you the public for this time to participate and present this. We do have a different PowerPoint, if we can get to it. But just to give a brief overview, this is a quick, this is a quick little update on the, um. Thank you. Think I'm gonna be able to drive with this clicker or?
No, you should be able to.
Might ask you to scroll.
Yes.
That's okay.
Yeah, it may be because it's in, don't be, but no.
Yeah.
General is able to drive, so, but, but yeah, go ahead, I can, I can click.
All right, I'll just tell you this slide, but thank you, uh, so this is the Parks Recreation Comprehensive Plan uh, for the town of Sylar City, we can go to the next slide. This effort is just beginning, this is just of your benefit or the benefit of the public here, just to talk about next steps and how this project is gonna progress. Like Jack said, my name is Daniel Ralwinkis with Withersdravenell, uh, we're the consultant for helping with this, I've been with them for six years as a project manager, focusing on long range planning. Our company does everything from civil engineering to asset management, though. Uh, this little map here on the right just shows some of the work that my team is doing across North Carolina. We primarily serve North Carolina, um, we go to the next slide. So, talking about this project at a big picture, this is a system-wide master plan, so this is the justice that the nation facilities, looking at the department's programs, operations, greenways system and everything in between, so it's a very comprehensive scope. It does build on our prior plans that the, that the town has adopted, so we will be looking at those. Uh, but it is a roadmap for our future, this is what we kind of call playbook for the department, so that they make informed decisions over the next ten years, but really, at its heart, it's gonna be a community vision. We're not making this plan, we're gonna facilitate the public to help make this plan, so that's our goal. Uh, we then take the public's input and balance it with the achievable action items, like I said, it's a ten-year plan, so we look at funding and phasing to make sure that when we look at year three in the plan, we have low-hanging fruit action items that So we look at funding and phasing to make sure that when we look at year three in the plan, we have low-hanging tree action items that will trust the community all the way to the ten-year plan. Where we talk about the action items and really, uh, department defining actions. We go to the next. So at at its core, there's four main steps to this project. Start there represents that we're still on the second first step, which is the system inventory and analysis. We'll talk about each of these on the next four pages, but just wanna highlight that this is a triangulated approach when it comes to data. We have qualitative data, uh, from the community, quantitative data from our findings, the Census Bureau, and also observation that our guilty have when we do assess the facilities. We can go to the next slide. So the first thing we do is system inventory analysis. This is where we are currently. If you look at the prior plans, as I mentioned, we evaluate the parks. We actually had all our teams already go out and evaluate the parks. Um, so the next steps we're looking at is benchmarking with national standards, looking at the facilities and averages compared with similar communities of this size. Then we'll look at level of service and how adequately that Siler City is being served by these recreation projects, facilities. We go to the next slide. Just to highlight here, I wanted to talk about level of service, not just in the quantity of, let's say, basketball courts, but where those basketball courts are located. So a part of this that's gonna come out from this assessment is we're gonna be geographically assessing the accessibility of these features. So for a basketball court, is it a half-mile walking distance instead of one mile bike ride or is it a three-mile? Short car ride or long bike ride to get to? That'll help us identify areas inside our city that may be underserved by these persons. Uh, from a geographic standpoint. We go to the next slide. So from the system inventory analysis, we go to the community assessment. That already begun with our demographic research that we started. But really what this, uh, the state of the project shows is where we go to the community and get their input. So we've already started with the steering committee. We met with them prior to this meeting tonight. Um, we will host stakeholder interviews. We have a needs workshop coming up. It will be three workshops in total. And we have a community survey that's live now. All this stuff will be advertised through the town's social media accounts and as the town seats that we go to the next. So once we have the community input, we start developing the vision. This is kind of the ten-year plan for the park system. And we worked pretty closely with staff and the steering committee during that time. This is the Parks and Recreation Committee, who will keep you abreast of this project while we continue forward with it. Um, that goes into the second workshop, which is the vision workshop, where we take it to the community and say, is this vision matching the G C for Siler City Parks and Recreation? And then from there, we go to the next slide, where we'll start developing action items and recommendations, which takes us to our final point here, the recommendations and implementation strategy. This is where we create a suite of recommendations for the Siler City Parks and Recreation Network, that can be new facilities, programs. It can be changes in the operations, maintenance, capital improvements if necessary. It can also be changes to a recommended, uh, analysis of other planning documents, like the development ordinance. Uh, with that, we'll have phasing strategies to make sure that it does have a cheap world between years one to ten. And then we'll identify the fundings, which as I mentioned, is a playbook. So we'll want to, uh, equip the town staff with all the funding mechanisms that they're aware of. Leveraging Withersdraven L's funding team for that purpose to identify those resource sources for otherwise. We go to the next slide, please. So next steps, first thing we got, our public workshop, that's gonna be June seventh from three P M. to seven P M. in the council chambers. Um, that's where we'll be kind of asking the first question of where are we today? Or where are we today and where do we want to see our circles? Um, so that'll be open to public drop-in, drop-out session. We also have our online survey open now. That's available on the Parks and Recreation webpage. And then long-term, just complete project perspective, we do anticipate bringing this for around December twenty twenty three for adoption. So that's pretty quick. I wanted to be wary of everyone's time. Uh, are there any questions?
One thing on that online survey, it's open. Are you advertising that people know to go there and it's a little app?
We just started advertising or just launched it. So we just are advertising through town social media. When we have that work session for that workshop on June seventh, we're gonna also be passing out key reports for that survey. Uh, the responsibility of advertising will be on the town, but we will also provide supplemental materials to help out with that.
As far as when you think about, um, parents who have children who are involved in recreation. Have you? Are you looking at getting that information to them so that they can go on and and fill out the survey?
Yes, so.
Instead of just, um, expecting the town to get it out, but you all have names, parents, and all of that, so they can get the information to do the survey as well.
Yes, ma'am. So so one of the things that was brought up by this Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee members was that same thing. So we're gonna be working with that team to identify who we can go through to make those connections and get those materials out to those parents of those children, uh, to really spread the word like so.
Also. To to even get to churches. Because you have, uh, older citizens who participate as well, so just trying to make sure that we're getting getting everybody as much as we possibly can.
And we've also begun identifying, um, Hispanic champions, humans, organizations like that, that we may also wanna be going through to ensure we get everyone's place to this, so. A very, um, concept of that is.
Yeah, that was my was having your advertisement, because usually in the past, you know, it's a great thing. But people don't know it. No longer go, they can go through and get enough information, really do that happen.
Well, that'll be our challenge in the next coming weeks. We'll be working closely with staff and with the steering committee to identify all areas that we can pursue to make sure that the staff are tied and the public is aware.
I've got a question. Jack, this is probably for you. Um, we did a a Parks and Recreation Master Plan a couple of years back when it seems months and so on forward. Is this replacing that? Is it updating that? We spent we spent quite a bit of time, money, and effort on that.
Well, there's parts, parts of the city that I played just more break off.
Okay.
This way we'll evaluate that current plan and make sure it is still relevant. Given to the population increase that wasn't anticipated, uh, could not, definitely, maybe it's.
Yeah, was for some reason I thought we had, maybe it was it was the overall Parks and Recreation Plan. I thought we were talking about other, you know, other facilities that that were part of.
We were, as we evaluate, we're looking for a potential recreation center out there, different square areas, try and small things.
Yeah.
This is, please, more than inclusive of our guys. But it was. It's the last thing we came up with. We can watch them.
I'll get it. I'll get it.
Yes, so there was a twenty fifteen adopted plan, not comprehensive. Plan, and that's hitting that. Ten-year lifespan. Generally, you'll see an update within five years where you'll see a brand new plan replaced eight to ten years later. But part of the thing to do is keep in mind with all of the comprehensive plan for the plan for it as well. So we wanna make sure that we're kind of equipped with land uses when we're talking about future residents.
No. We're in Parks and Recreation. I I'm good. I just see your, my question, we spent a four hundred thousand dollars on that, um, that plan. And so I just wanted to make sure that we're not growing or just not growing that out or taking taking in, you know, taking recommendations from that.
Yes, so you're you're.
Actually, the thing is, was it was after that, I think. I'm not sure if I wanna say.
Not the way that a lot of us all.
No, this was this one had, this one had, I mean, we had a, it was included right far, because we had, we had the centrally centrally located, there were. Four four softball fields that were were were, um, being relocated. We had a, um, we had a pond, a pond that had, you know, walking trails, and we had a community center over there where the soccer field is across from Brookwood.
Yeah. I wasn't waiting for.
Yeah. Okay.
But those both of those land, the, what I believe is the twenty fifteen, the previous comprehensive land that break apart, those are brought in, as we mentioned, the previous planning studies. We incorporate that and look at the trends of those previous plans, see what we're accomplishing, and still outstanding, and then go further.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? That is. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any other question before we move on? Okay. Next, uh, the basis. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, uh. Turned into the new text and then go to staff, Karen's office, new code minimum. Uh, this is the right way to spare the H and packet. Sacrifice and M O. Uh, this is a, uh, I'm going to speak to our attention at the conversation with myself and the whole organization at the town. And I have been talking about what we have nuisances in the right way. Um. The town note obviously has a nuisance section, and it's clear that if you have all grass, we can send out letters to any county that already the state's standing by that section. But it's it's not clear, and and actually, uh, you know, let this out of the of the gap and expanded interpretation for several years. If it's the other nuisance that are in that section, and we have a lot of nuisance, if you if you do it at page thirty nine, uh, of the schedule, uh, of this case, they. I I just highlighted a couple of them, starting with, uh, on that page, letter D E T H J K. Are a number of nuisances that we can send letters to, and they're all of their own, the the law personals. But once those nuisance are in the right way, the ordinance, the way it reads, that allow producer or political policy to send a letter and clean up. So what happens is there are items that all listed in this, that the town, the court, uh, crew picks up. As a part of their, um, track collection, pick up of of nuisance that are placed out out there to be like limbs and leaves and stuff. But there are some things that our citizens put out that the local courts do not authorize or direct to. And we don't have a letter that can send them to the police that's going to do that. So the reason why it's a limit is go back to, uh, page thirty six. That's what we read here. Someone just reached in the way this section reads, you can't be involved or the owner of the property to be law or. And that's that's pretty clear to find is that a lot is outside of the law. It's there, there are barriers. Uh, a man in the town who committed to existing in such law or parcel in any condition which may be declared denoxious, detrimental, offensive, nuisance. So, um, on your property. We send you a letter to have it cleaned up. If it's all the property, we don't have that ability. But we believe section B allows us to do that. That's what we're asking for, uh, to be considered by the town or line of different act. Any law or parcel of land in lieu, but not linked to the following. Uh, joining, budding, and or adjacent byway, the edge of the surface of a digital driveway, a mini street or highway, adjacent sidewalk, adjacent branch strip, curb, gutter, grass, well, ditch, and or one half of an adjacent alley. And so this allows. The code book department now send letters when within the nuisance, and then the plan plays out easily, they're not. They're not a view. Or or moved by holding person first. They're moving simple letter and have that out of the news. Now we're probably gonna accept them on an area of no management. But we're looking to pick it up, code book can't send a letter, a track, or whatever this stays out. If it doesn't mean people right here. So this would close that gap. And hopefully we'll have a free communication, and code book can help works about this is not, we can't pick up. Code book can send a letter. That's the purpose of it. That's all I have. I wouldn't be considering that anything.
So that was. So even though it might go on the property. If somebody else threw it out there. On your property, you still responsible with somebody.
We 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 address that. So, um. There's that among the.
I figured it in that.
Get that. I'm gonna examine, then we go there basically. We'll get that in the the near land genome. There's a house that's been remodeled. And, uh, the order that a lot of their brothers and their neighbors on, and it was a big. Well, we found that to who could there. We talked to the Maryland Department of Police with the county, and then I sent them a letter for dumping illegal dung with this collar. And so, uh, to answer your question. We we don't have that authority to determine who put the trash that it did. So we do see nuisance on the property, proper property. The next one person we got to know. And, um. If it is illegal dung, then we can get that in the front and forth with officer inbox, do that out of the best of this. Was it more of a law and worship thing rather than. Code divorce.
That was a question. I don't know if it's late to get this off. Uh, I see a couple of instances where. People, I read this wildflower park, and they're playing right there, cleaning the sidewalk. And there, and there's all kinds of, there's wildflowers. And they bloom and fruit, but there's all kinds of weeds and everything else in there. It's not, it's not a mole, kept up and that like that.
It's true, uh, and you know, probably the department that, and when they just, uh, thirty eight, very near a couple of years ago, where we started talking about, um, what the exceptions are to grass and weeds. And so we've got a list of, um. Visions, I guess, to say, and it says things like, we're only producing that for plants. Uh, training oil, scroll, twelve minutes, so there are some things that we're gonna identify on the extent. However, we still go back to the beginning of this section, and it says that, um, any flats, place of dead, steady, broken, leaf, grass, or other, or other nasty, you know, that's what they, you know, over competition type, that's the first minute. And then we get into things like, um. A place of growth, mine, those of any. When some conditions causing a breeding ground for loads or the focal point of any other nuisance. So we have to determine that if that is what it is, it is a nuisance first. We have to relate to that. This doesn't happen as often. It's clearly from your yard with, you know, sixteen grass, that's pretty easy. But when we get into scrub areas or particular landscape areas, we gotta think about it a bit. And, um. We we have to have a bunch of them to figure out if it is a nuisance or risk. Oh, really?
Because it is, and that kind of thing is a risk, I think.
If you move talk to. Here today, um, to look at and take a photo and take a good example, so we're saying to the road, so it's not just an open bar.
It's, uh, Brad, who was pretty ready to period.
For example, is it, uh, weeds, home grass, or a code? Coming up, all all of the rain or something. It's a pretty great name. I'm thinking we got it. In the view, and some of that's town property in there. And of course, they got it free, uh, I don't think like that. And see what we'll do. So if I run off, my team on the wheels.
I thought we would surround on the grass. You could find it.
That's right. First, we bring it out. Appreciate that.
Why are you talking about grass? Thanks for giving grass.
Yeah. Yeah, we can get it in the sketch. We got our station with the owners. And, um, they 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 can run it or something.
I don't know about the rest of them. I got seven. Oh, all about that.
It was probably took as long as you do, because it'd be, even after being noted by me and so forth, but we think that's fair enough. Hopefully, we're gonna see.
The house is that a living church? Over here? You know, I don't.
Oh, shut down.
You told me.
So what happened?
Okay. I'm afraid for food.
Huh?
Breath return.
Western.
Western.
Wow.
Is that, is it western church over there?
No, it's over here.
You come out there, uh. My ladder, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
There's a house that's right there by it. I don't know if anybody is there or anything. I, you know, I was just traveling, and I saw this house, and it had real color red. I didn't, I don't know if anybody's living there. It was, they were totally on the buttons. But, um, I saw it. That.
So, okay. Appreciate it. Your hair.
What we need to run, I actually. Um.
Need a motion.
A motion to consider the ordinance on page, uh, thirty six, thirty seven.
Can you pass them? Or I'll ask, just add to the motion that the ordinance becomes a fact that the following option that claims it. Doesn't appear to be always in that.
Okay.
It's not a big deal, just.
Okay.
Good morning, Steve.
I'll make a motion that's good. I'll make a motion to adopt the nuisance right-of-way ordinance. May the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Did I get it?
And then it becomes immediately.
It becomes immediate, do that.
Now, motion, say, here for. Here, you know, I want the favor say ah.
Ah.
I want both likes and. Motion here. All right, man.
I'll keep reading what I think to do there a lot. Uh. I think it was for a rep. We got a, I'm budget presentation tomorrow. Uh, the years going to be forgetting that. Uh, the positive views, uh, we will be able to fill several positions, we are in the yellow. You know, package, because we follow the fourth, and the very last page, you'll see several new hires that just started. Uh, New Street Man's work, Derek Fouts, we've only been able to fill, uh, ability maintenance position for the first ten years. Uh, Derek Bass has been hired with the police recruit. She met, uh, Evan Critten, he's a finance analyst. And we also today, we can, uh, days and hours, we start to fill our final police audit position, as well as Jerry Kidd, uh, one of them from Randolph County Sheriff's Office. And, um, our pool, uh, gray park, which there was a pass since infection today. So that would be ready to go, and, uh, I mean, their, uh, staff are really working hard, and probably the full day attendance in my car position. Uh, I think we only then we got, uh, the full season, uh, starting. And, uh. The ending note, uh, this is Jack Flowering, live to be with us, but see designing parts of that director that could be, uh, we can, so. We can invest in this. That's all.
Uh, let me add one thing to this. I've got, I have got a couple of phone calls here in the last week. From that society, some folks out of South City Airport, it evidently. It's on a hotspot, and people go out there, party, and carry on in part of the lot, and they leave their beer cans and everything else out there and all that. Could you please? Well, I know. You know, I know. Yeah, but evidently, and and what I understand is. Yeah, but evidently, and, and what I understand is, I know there's cameras out there, they know what a camera costs, and they're conspicuous, we don't get in picture. So, so you know, the, the, the problem. And so if you just look into that, because it evidently is, it's some reoccurring thing. I think, the department report, we, anything different, before we got a bag of. Nothing. And, and turning, I, you know, did, maybe, but, 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 anybody comments? I hear none. Okay, you didn't, no, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to, uh, tell Jack, uh, Jack that chicken turkeys will, uh, and also, and I care, uh, for providing, uh, chickens. And, and glad I didn't write this here.
Next year, Mr. Moon and I have a different strategy. We're not gonna follow the rules like everybody is. All right, anything else? All right.
All right, I imagine we're going to close session, we're telling them, said, one, three, three, eleven, five.